And we're going to, as we normally do, we're going to take a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you would join us in a moment of reflection, please. Thank you. I'm going to ask you for a last stand, and I'm going to ask Councilman Harry Collins to give the resignation pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is public hearings, and I don't believe we have any tonight, Randy. Is that correct? Very good. Under consent agenda, we have minutes of the May 9 meeting, the monthly bills, a resolution recognizing Christiansburg High School wrestling team for winning the state championship for 16 consecutive years, a resolution recognizing Christiansburg High School student Caleb Hatcher for winning the state championship in one meter diving, and a resolution recognizing Christiansburg High School student Madison Padjic for winning the state championship in high jump.
Oh, they pull up.
No, high jump. We got it, boss. Okay. We checked that out.
Okay.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I suppose we called it wrong. You want the boys coming? Yeah. Okay, thank you. I also need to adjust, make an adjustment to the agenda, which I forgot to mention. I would like to move under introductions and presentations, the presentations and proclamations for the wrestling, for the people that we just approved a moment ago. So that will be A1. Citizens comments. This is open for any citizen that may want to come and speak on behalf of themselves, for the town. Any questions, comments? This is a good time to do it. I ask that you stand, give us your name, address. You can come to the podium if you'd like, or if your voice carries well, you can stand back at the chairs. Anyone here that would like to address council? Bob?
My name is Bob Leonard, representing Christiansburg Institute. for us to speak today. We're putting some images on the screen from our architectural reports for the revitalization of the Edgar A. Long Building. These are just to give you a sense of our intentions and the volume of work that has already been accomplished in our effort to revitalize the campus. I'm not going to take a long time making any kind of close examination of these images. You're welcome to ask questions as it were free. What I do want to do is take a moment to thank you for the time that you took in January to get together to hear our history and our vision for the future. It was a thrilling time for us to stand united and unified with the Christiansburg Community Center to present ourselves as an active coalition with shared vision goals. Since the summit, we have met with the town administration several times to learn how we might best to advance the conversation we began in January. You are now in the midst of drafting, preparing a draft budget, a task that is unmistakably challenging this particular year. As you take up that challenge, I would like to ask that you accept and consider a revised request for support of Christiansburg Institute Incorporated. It should be noted that our initial request, which we made deadline, was prepared and submitted prior to the summit, and our revisions reflect what we have learned since the summit. When we met with administration over the course of the last couple of months, we were in the process of making this change. That got shorter when the tragedy occurred and we lost our town manager. So this is the best I know how to bring this to your attention. Our request is that you respectfully consider supporting $56,300 in support of re-roofing the Edgar A. Long Building. We have engineering and construction reports that verify this figure as our target for a full restoration of the roof. We have them in hand. This action is the initial implementation for revitalizing the Long Building and campus. After years of organizational preparation and careful planning, we are taking this vitally important next step towards regaining our properties as a center for telling the story of Christiansburg Institute, a proud history of the whole town of Christiansburg, and as a center for advancing that legacy through a multicultural learning and meeting place for the New River Valley and beyond. As part of our preparation for this step, we have successfully formed a strong and active coalition through the Christiansburg Community Center, our sibling organization in the history of Christiansburg Industrial Institute. We have also attracted important new people to our organization to help build strong partnerships in the community and to lead a comprehensive capital campaign for the renovation of the building and the scattered good campus. Unifying the old Hill School with the Long Building and the scattered good campus sets a strong base on which to develop a historic complex with national impact as well as significant local value. We look to the town of Christiansburg to join us as our partner in this effort. We envision working with the town over the next year to deepen and expand our planning based on our mutual interests. In that light, I would like to introduce two men who have joined our effort and would like to say a few words. First, Mr. Christopher Sanchez. He has taken fire with this effort as he has learned of our story. Mr. Sanchez?
I'm Chris Sanchez, and I represent the Christiansburg Institute. Good evening. I am honored to address this council and its constituency, the people of the Christiansburg community. I stand before you as a witness to the incomprehensible strength and enduring legacy of the remaining Christiansburg Institute alumni, their descendants, and their powerful story. I also stand before you as an advocate committed to honoring that legacy and proclaiming that story, both here in our Christiansburg community, the New River Valley, and abroad as opportunities arise. It is the remarkable historical narrative of the institute, a narrative deeply entrenched and mutually shared with the development of this great town that is most compelling. This narrative must remain central to our vision of restoring the Edgar A. Long Building, for it is one of interracial cooperation focused on achieving a shared goal and realizing a shared vision and overcoming extraordinary odds through fellowship and communion across racial lines. It is truly difficult to capture the full scope of the Christiansburg Institute, its robust history, and how this has all influenced me personally. As a young man of color, it has impacted me greatly in providing me with a strong sense of community and connectedness to my African-American heritage. I have lived in Chicago, Oregon, Michigan, and now Virginia, and I can say with confidence and integrity that the story of the Christiansburg Institute is a story that needs to be both preserved and proclaimed so folks from communities of color, both in the state of Virginia and abroad, can perhaps find the community and agency I had too found in the history of the Christiansburg Institute. Its history powerfully intersects with emancipation, reconstruction, and the formal education of blacks across the New River Valley and beyond. Since the establishment of the Christiansburg Institute Alumni Association, folks have been hardworking and dedicated to continuing its story and legacy. Now, from an organizational standpoint, many moving pieces within the institute have had difficulty gaining cohesion for lack of resources and capacity. Most of the work has been done on the volunteer base. We are now entering, I believe, a new era for the institute as these moving pieces are now able to and are beginning to concentrate and centralize. I am a part of that process and am fully committed to its fruition. We live in a time of great division, of great conflict, and of great confusion, particularly in the area of race and race relations. It is my firm conviction that the Christiansburg Institute, in partnership with the town of Christiansburg and the community before us, can cooperatively and collectively utilize the Edgar A. Long Building as a space to serve as a pillar of diversity, inclusion, and learning, providing an urgently needed model of reconciliation and equity during these confusing times. May we together imagine and build towards a more just and more equitable and more compassionate society in our future work together. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Chris. You can now well imagine how excited we are to be working with Chris. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Alvin Hughes, whom I know several of you already know, is joining us, coming from his extensive knowledge and practical experience in our community, and has committed himself to developing and strengthening our partnerships in a comprehensive fundraising campaign. Mr. Hughes?
Good evening. My name is Alvin Hughes, and I'm here with the NAACP. I mean, CIP. I'm getting ready to say the NAACP. Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would first like to start off and thank you, Mr. Mayor, the town council, for giving me this opportunity this evening to speak on the topic of our history. As I hope many of you know, in 1866, Captain Schaefer, Charles Schaefer, United States Army, founded the Christiansburg Institute, known today as the Edgar A. Long Building as part of many missions of the Freedmen's Bureau, an organization established after the Civil War in 1865 to aid freedmen or former slaves in the South, as well as helping found the institute. Captain Schaefer helped build many of the churches, schools, and graveyards from here to Tennessee. Back then, as a white man trying to do this, there were many who tried to stop him, who tried to kill him, as he, as it is said, the fact of the time. This man sacrificed his life to bring education, churches, as well as many other things to the freedmen of the area. And a result of this gained on Booker T. Washington as an advisor to the institute in 1896. If you have begun to wonder why I am telling you this, it is because the Edgar A. Long Building, as well as Captain Schaefer, is our history. He is the history of this It gets me kinda emotional, but I want to let you know, ladies and gentlemen, that his legacy must not die. We all are part of his legacy. As I remember, one day I was cooking for the rescue squad. Mrs. Stipes walked up to me and he said, "Alvin, one day, hopefully you'll be sketched in stone for the things you do in this community. But I want you to know, I want all of you sketched in stone for what you do for the Edgar A. Long Building." As some of you may know, the building is currently in a state of despair and are rare to still even exist today since the Klan burned down many of the buildings built by the Freedmen's Bureau. It is our duty and only to Captain Charles Schaefer and the Edgar A. Long Building. But to our ancestors and our children, to bring the building and Captain Schaefer back to life, we must be able to tell and show our children this is the legacy our ancestors left us. It is our history, and I thank y'all for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Alvin. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Just to conclude, we thank you for this opportunity. If there are questions, they are more than welcome.
Well, I just wanted to say I wanted to thank you for inviting me to your meeting last, last January. It was very interesting. And at that time, I believe that you said something about some ideas that you were maybe going to try to do in the area of fundraising for this coming summer, the coming months, and I was wondering if anything like that had been laid out yet.
We're beginning work with Mr. Hughes on that matter. He has made a commitment to work with us. As he has stepped away from the responsibilities of chairing and leading the NAACP local chapter, I think he's found a little bit, little bit of time and has made that commitment with us, and that's what we're working on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That was one of my questions, was Mr. Hughes, as he wrapped up, was he, was he making a personal commitment to this effort? And I'd like you to state so. Is that correct, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir.
The $56,000 request, is that entirety to redo the roof?
According to the engineering and construction reports that you have in hand, those numbers add up to $56,300.
And that will get the job done?
That's what we believe.
I have a question, a couple actually. The figure, the 56.3 will be as far as the integrity of the roof?
Yes.
And obviously, whether out from the top down, if you will. Has there been, Steve kind of alluded to this a little bit about the fundraising efforts, but have you all centered in on or decided upon a figure which will be an expectation or a goal for fiscal for this particular year as far as a fundraising effort?
Basically, we're looking at this figure.
Yes.
We're taking the roof as the primary focus for this year, and we will be looking to fund, fund that and our ordinary fundraising effort for general operating expenses. What we would like to see, what we are anticipating to see, is that we would sit down with town administration and look at a longer picture and develop a plan with the town. Not to say that the town is going to fund it. We're not asking for the town to fund it. We're asking for the town to help us build a plan that would include the town's interest and the town's capacity to help raise funds.
If the, if the roof is remediated, frankly replaced at this point, and I notice there's a lot of structural pillars and bags also would have to go in to, again, for as far as an integrity situation. Are there any other partners that you all have looked at partnering with? And secondly, have you all looked at any type of historical type of grants or any other financial opportunities that may exist?
We have, we have in the past looked at these grants. What we, what we need to establish is our own capacity and strength at home. I have raised money through grants most of my life, and I know that it is the first order of business to ensure that the home office is functioning and organized, and it's taken us a bit of time to get that in place. That's what we're doing now, and I think that Mr. Hughes, Mr. Sanchez's commitment to this effort is a testimony to our own capacity at this point to move forward.
Okay. And lastly, the information provided to us tonight that notes that 56.3 figure, how many bids did you all receive, and how did you decide upon what particular firm to go with for that particular figure?
We did not put it to bid.
Okay, you just, you went to one particular firm?
We went to these firms at the advice of-
When you said these firms, is there more than one?
There's Truesdale Engineering and Snyder Contracting. Those are the two organizations.
Okay, so engineering and then the construction itself?
Right, right. And we went to them with the advice of Dr. David Moore, who was a consultant working for us over the last 18 months, about a year ago, that produced a whole plan on seeking partners. And we put that plan out publicly, and we brought that plan to you and at this time last year. And essentially, the summit is a result of that plan because you expressed interest in pursuing the question of rather than just simply funding us, becoming a partner, having a say in how we move forward, and having real clarity about how we move forward. Yes, sir?
At that meeting in January, there was a lady, I believe, from Virginia Tech.
Yes.
And I forget what her position was.
She's associate provost, diversity and inclusion. Her name is Dr. Minna Pratt-Clark.
That's exactly right, yeah. And I think that she had mentioned that maybe you and Tech could be working together to maybe generate funding or, or whatever.
Correct.
Have you heard from her?
Yes, we have had a meeting with Dr. Pratt-Clark. We are, we presented the history, and she's asked for some particular documents. This is part of our reality. Some of those documents are in the hands of Jackie Eves' daughter. Ms. Eves passed, and her estate is still in transfer, so we're waiting to have access to those documents. As soon as we get that, we will be taking those documents to Dr. Pratt-Clark. But what Dr. Pratt-Clark has said to me and to Jessie Eves, we've both met with her, that she believes that there is funding sources that Virginia Tech has access to that would be very interested in this project, and that she would help us, but she needs some documentation, which is in process.
Any of those identified?
Uh, no. She may have said the name to me, but I don't feel at all at liberty to speak to that.
One other thing, you have a very nice drawing here.
Yes.
And it does nice work. Do you have any rough idea of approximately how much it would cost to revitalize the whole building?
Two points up to me?
It's only I have a look.
No, it's not there.
It's not there, okay.
This is for the roof period. The whole building has been projected at 2.2 million. That's just the building. What, in conversation with town administrators, the reality of furnishing the building and preparing for the purposes that we're looking at, we're looking in excess of, of that by several, by a lot of money, probably four to five.
Million?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
I, I'm looking at this. I don't see anything on here with the roof itself. Everything is talking about the trusses, the supports, and all that.
That's all in reference to the roof itself.
Okay, but that includes the roofing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's not in here like that, though.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Ever since we met a few months ago, and I'm going to refer to it as a coalition, Community Center and the two groups, the Christiansburg Alumni, and I know you've spoken with town administration, little has come out since your meeting, at least from the town staff, and it could be, you know, due to the tragedy that happened. But could you sort of tell or let me know and council what's happened since that? Because I believe we left it off that, you know, there should be a board, a legit board formed. And that's my impression when we left there that night, was to form a board amongst the coalition members and the town and the county, and hopefully Virginia Tech as well, one that actually could put a vision together, put plans together, actually borrow money or apply for grants.
Instead of borrow money.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, I mean, how is that going?
It's going, it's going pretty well. We, the, there are three representatives that constitute the leading, the leadership of the coalition. Deacon Dave Moore from the center, Catherine King representing the Alumni Association, and Latonya Walker representing the Christiansburg Institute Incorporated. And they, along with other folks who are very interested in this, meet monthly. So we've met, very large, we both met, met four times. We've been assigning specific committees to move forward on various aspects of it, public relations, budgeting, common vision. All these things take the time that they take to lay that out, but we are definitely on the move.
Are you keeping minutes of these meetings?
Yes.
The two men who were with you that night, are they still involved with your organization?
Yes.
Are they still working for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bob, speaking to your information you provided us this evening, and I certainly appreciate you and the other folks that you brought to support this. The proposals are somewhat dated.
They are.
Is Truesdale still alive, what I would call a live proposal? Is he still?
I have not tested that. Here's what, here's what happened. With the leadership that we got from Dr. Dave Moore from our consultant, not to be confused with Deacon Dave Moore. That's confusing for me. The, the proposals came forward with the caveat that more research needs to get done. And you'll see that the last item, the most recent dated item, January of 2016, from Truesdale, says that it would cost us in the vicinity of $5,500 or something like that to move forward to get the actual construction plan to hand over to the construction folks. And in the course of that, they don't know what they might find. And we felt that it was premature, not knowing where the $50,000 was going to come from, it was premature to take that next step. As you say, these are dated documents in two years, so we don't know what we might find when we make those, when we make that commitment of dollars to proceed.
So I guess the question is based on the fact that if council wants to support this, there's obviously an expectation that certain things will be accomplished as a result of that.
That's right. And the first thing we would do is move forward with, with Truesdale.
And his fees are reasonable. I mean, the fees proposed are reasonable based, you know, based on his comparison to work in fact, probably half of what I would expect to see for-
Right.
-design and construction. Anyway, so I'll just throw that out there. I mean, you're requesting us to take a formal action, and we would, I think, well, this, I speak for myself, if we were to take favorable action, we would like some, we would like to have some level of assurance or expectation-
Yes, sir.
-that the money has been, you know, accomplished, what it's intended to accomplish.
That's right. And we would be happy to work with you step by step along the way. That's what we imagine as a partnership. If you were to make this choice, you would be saying, "We are with you," and we would turn to you and let you know exactly what's going on step by step, through whatever mechanism in administration might be appropriate.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you all very much.
It's not hard to get the agenda here, but the $56,000, that that is a total cost of the Edgar A. Long?
That, according to the documents you have, is their best estimate under the circumstances, and it will require a final construction review, I mean, engineering review to bring it up to date, and we will move forward on that.
Now, are you expecting the whole, us to pay the whole $56,000, or do you, is your concern have any money to add to?
We would love for you to take the whole bill. Everybody in this room would anticipate that that would be terrific. Everybody in this room would anticipate that that would be terrific. If you cannot afford that, we are certainly committed to working to find the funds to make this happen. We are not giving up by any stretch of the imagination. We are moving forward. It is possible that it would cost more than that. We are committed to making the money difference if it were to cost more than that.
Mr. Leonard, what are your current administrative fees on a yearly basis?
Operating costs?
Yes.
We have fixed costs of about $10,000. We have programmatic costs that are based on available funds. They come in around $5,000. And we have the intention to begin to move from an all-volunteer organization to a professionally-staffed organization, and we are making an effort step by step to move in that direction. We are making contracts within our available resources to do that, step by step, quarter as it were, by quarter. Right now, in our current budget, if we were successful at raising all the money that we intend to raise, we are looking at having about $36,000 to move in that direction. That's personnel.
Well, I went through a quick glance of this thing, of the estimates, and I honestly do not see anything here that strikes me as a permanent roof. You're doing all of the support work to get it done, but I don't see anything that's going to protect it once you get it done.
You're getting the sheathing on the top.
The shingles. The roof. Whatever it is, is that? I mean, I'm just saying, you may want to double check with your man.
I will definitely double check on that.
But I don't see anything that's going to protect the work once it's done.
Well, we're certainly going to protect the work that's going to get done. We're going to put shingles on. The reality is, as a historic site, that can be expensive. And quite frankly, we've been told that we can get artificial, it's supposed to look like slate, but it doesn't have to be slate. We can get artificial materials for a slate cover.
Okay. I just want to recall that to your attention.
Absolutely. We will work with you, let you know what's going on. The next step is the next step.
I would think that $56,000 is going to cover the whole thing. You probably ought to jump on it pretty quick, but I think you're going to, you're going to find a significant additional cost for that roof.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other? Go ahead.
One more question, please, sir. Do you have an accounting of the money that the town has already let you have in years past?
Yes.
Can we get a copy of that?
You have, when Mr. Bishop first got on, he asked for three years back, and I provided that. So however many years back that is, and we have an end-of-year statement, and we've made available to you, I think in this, in this submission, on the official one, are 990. And you would have 990s from the way back, and if you have any missing, I'd be happy to get them for you.
Yeah, well, you please, because I wasn't here when he started.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we have that in the, in the request, so we have that on file some morning.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Bob, I hate to tell you, you used more than your three minutes, but that's okay.
I want to thank you very much.
We're good right now.
Thanks, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to address council? Seeing or hearing no one, I will close the citizens' comments section. We will move to introductions and presentations, and Ms. Powell?
Yeah, you want to do the resolutions first?
No, we'll do that second. We got it. I got this.
We have two certificates tonight to present. First, two young women who are here who were selected to participate in and successfully completed the House of Delicates Page Program. And so I'll just read a subsection of the certificate here. It says that serving as a page is an honor, and through your work, you have simplified dedication, commitment, and integrity. Thank you for positively representing our town and working to make a difference in your community. And I'd like to invite Meredith D'elia and Caleb Loveens. And the mayor's going to present you with the certificates. And I'll grab a photo, if that's all right.
Caleb?
Yeah, I'm Meredith.
You're Meredith. Congratulations. I know that you served a couple of years ago, right?
Yes.
But the good part is that I was not bringing you forward sooner. Caleb, thank you very much. Photo ops, parents? Invited guests and friends? Scoop, you got your camera going? So, both of you tell me, everything you learned about?
Yeah.
I mean, how, I mean, how was the experience? I mean, how did you guys successful?
It was very educational. It helped me with leadership, for sure. And since I'm going to be a senior next year, it helped me decide what I would like to major in, like political science, when I go to college.
Very good.
Yeah, it was a-
I get you, I get you, mother.
It was just a fun experience because I got to meet and work with everyone there in firsthand experience of the association.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, our pages.
Great job.
Come on, get these, get these.
I'll let you and Lauren get the photos.
Get your photos, okay. I'm going to get this back around this way. This ain't even on. Can you? Very good. It's unusual. Good job, guys. We have a couple of individual recognitions tonight. The first is a resolution in recognition of Caleb Hatcher, state title. Whereas Caleb Hatcher, who just completed his freshman year at Christiansburg High School on the state 3A championship in one-eater diving on February 16th, 2017, at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. And whereas Caleb Hatcher has an outstanding, had an outstanding season and worked hard to conquer, conquer difficult dives. And whereas Caleb Hatcher brought favorable recognition to Christiansburg High School, the town of Christiansburg, and the larger community through his dedication and success. And whereas the Christiansburg Athletic Aquatic Center is proud to serve as the home pool for the Christiansburg High School swimming and diving teams, it is excited to watch Caleb Hatcher grow, continue to grow in the sport and compete in future events. Now therefore be it resolved, the council of town of Christiansburg hereby expresses its congratulations and appreciation to Caleb Hatcher for his continued outstanding performance, and we extend our best wishes for continued success. Upon an a, a call for an a vote or a nay vote following resolution, the regular town council meeting, Christiansburg Town Council, held May 23rd, 2017. Members stood opposite the votes on this certification. Caleb, you're no cross-country guy, aren't you? Scoop wants a picture. And your dad wants a picture. I understand that you're training with Piedmontes, Ron and Tina and Ronnie, is that right? That's good, so.
And Leah.
And Leah, of course, and Leah. So it's, it's a big honor, but you, I understand you're, maybe you're not as experienced in diving as you were in the cross-country, is that right?
Yeah.
You just took it up on the whip?
Yeah.
Now, that's pretty good. Not bad, not bad. So, congratulations again. We appreciate all that you do and the honor that you bring to the town.
Yes, thank you.
That's fantastic. We're here tonight. We're not late. Okay, we have the same resolution honoring Madison. I will see that she gets this, and Marty, wherever you talk out there, I'll make sure that he gets some 54 states. She won the state 3A high jump championship in the indoor track season this year, so we will congratulate her, congratulate her maybe at a future meeting. Thank you. I'm now going to ask Councilman Cord Hall if he will come forward and present a resolution since he is a former wrestler, is that what we call?
I'm not a former wrestler. He isn't that tough.
Someone ask Mr. Hall, he will take this, listen for me.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Coach Close, if I can have you and the members of the board come forward? See you again. This has become a common occurrence, and again, not for cheap and whatsoever, but it's, again, I think every year I talk about the expectation, and it's year to year, the expectation and the bar is set increasingly high. And once again, here we are, celebrating the exact same accomplishment, the same feat, which once again is even more unprecedented than it was the year before. So I believe I heard Tony Dybrow speak about it at the graduation, again, this past, I think it was Sunday, had mentioned this feat as well. This is, again, unprecedented and unknown, frankly, throughout sports, is my understanding. So with that being said, this is a resolution in recognition of the Christiansburg High School Wrestling Team. It says, whereas the Christiansburg High School Wrestling Team has once again been victorious, winning the Virginia High School League Group 3A State Championship on February 18th, 2017, in Salem, Virginia. And whereas the Christiansburg Wrestling Team has sustained a record of winning the state championship, having won for the years, and I'm not going to do through, let's, we're going to, we're going to list these, 2002, 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, and now 2017. And whereas, in a true team effort, the Christiansburg High School Blue Demons accumulated 204 points this year to win the state championship, outdisting the runner-up by 65 points. And whereas team member Hunter Boland, who finished the season with a 37-1 record, won an individual state championship in the 160-pound division after a 17-2 technical fall victory in state. And whereas this record of accomplishment in winning the state championship for sixteen, for sixteen, okay, sorry, sixteen consecutive years has brought, it says favorable, it's brought an immeasurable recognition for the town of Christiansburg, its coaches, its wrestling team members, and the community as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of town of Christiansburg hereby expresses its congratulations and appreciation to Coach Sunday Close and all members of the Christiansburg High School Wrestling Team for their continued outstanding performance in the Virginia State 3A Wrestling Championships, and we extend our best wishes for continued success. This was on a nay, on a yea or nay vote, was unanimous by the town council and the mayor as well. We greatly appreciate everything and all the positive, positive recognition you bring to the town. And having been to practices in the past, just kind of sitting in and looking in, I know what daily you all go through. This is not simply something where you show up once in a while and go through the motions. You don't get 16 consecutive state championships by going through the motions. You are apparently the exemplary professionals, in my opinion, at the high school level. Thank you very much, and I get out. Coach Close, all my appreciation, thank you very much.
Guys, could you get in a little bit closer and closer?
Yeah. I'm going to ask Coach Close, so keep with mind, there's a certificate we also have for Hunter Boland. I think it's best coming from him as the coach to hunt.
Don't move, we got plenty of cameras behind you.
Just real quick, right here.
So, I guess the question I have, how many of you young men were born when they were first taught? I'm serious. How many of you are under 17 years of age? There you go. Very good, very good. That's pretty impressive, very impressive, gentlemen, thank you very much.
And Coach Close, again, you've got the audience, you're on videos or anything.
You want to introduce your guys?
Please, and, and you'd like to say?
This is my assistant, Coach Dan, who's a, he helps out a lot. This is Josh Linkus, state runner-up. This is Patrick Farrell. This is Andy Smith. This is Xander Whitehurst, state runner-up. This is Marshall Teller, who's a state champion. This is Nick Giontino, who's a state champion. And as you know, this is Hunter Boland, who's also a state champion, but they were in previous years, so it's not this year. There you go. Where's everybody?
Very good. Hey, guys, can I say something? Well, you've heard, I'm sure, that we're going to have a kind of parade for you, and it got held off because the school, you know, wanted to get their stuff done for us this year. But I talked with the principal this morning, the athletic director, and I'm going to get with the club, you know, that helps you guys, and we will have a parade for you guys this year. And Sheila has already said that we could have all the trucks we want. Would you guys rather ride in a truck?
Just for the parade? Just for the parade, yeah.
It'll be fun.
If we have, if we have one unit for each state championship, it may be longer than the Christiansburg.
Well, you're right.
That's a good thing, guys.
And we're going to try to get people from all 16 years in it also, so, yeah, please let them know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Before we go any further, I want, we're going to take about a two or three minute break, so that those of you in the audience can, if you would like to congratulate these young men and women for their accomplishments, let's just, we'll take a couple of minutes and-
Mr. Mayor, I could, before we do that, I just, one of the things that's so good about winning these 16 years, so many Christiansburg wrestlers have gone on to wrestle in college. And, I mean, if anybody follows Virginia Tech, some of their best wrestlers, you know, have won championships for the whole country. And I know several of you guys will probably be going, I know Farrell has got some great wrestlers from Christiansburg, and I think that's such a great deal, you know, spreading Christiansburg around, around the state and around the country about what a great program we have here. And I congratulate all of you and wish all the best of luck as you move on.
Hey, Stephen, let me take that one step further before we take this three, three-minute break. I'm very blessed in my employment to be able to go into a lot of area high schools. I pretty much live in the schools, and I go to schools inside and outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia. You would be surprised. I always walk in the gym when I go to a school almost always. I like to always look at the banners, I like to always look at the walls, and you would be surprised the amount of schools in and outside the Commonwealth of Virginia that recognize immediately the name Christiansburg when it's mentioned as a wrestling, not just powerhouse, but again, the epitome of success at high school athletics. It happens more times than not, and it doesn't matter where I'm at, the most rural or the most urban of schools, they recognize the excellence that comes from the town of Christiansburg, and you're one of the reasons for it. For that, I thank you.
Talk about three minutes, three minutes. All right, I will call the meeting back into session, and we have introduction of new employee, Melissa Powell. Would you like to handle this for me? Is she still here?
Yes, she is.
I didn't leave.
Sorry, I'm bad.
All right, I think some of you may have come by to my house and met Anika, but this is Anika Miller. She is the new public relations specialist. I have a little blurb about her I'm mainly going to read because I didn't have time to look at it before. But Anika grew up in Southern California and moved to Christiansburg in September after graduating from UCLA with a bachelor's degree in political science in June of 2016. She has a background in both public relations and journalism, having served as an external relations assistant in UCLA's Graduate School of Education for several years before becoming the community news editor for the News Messenger and Radford News Journal. She's thrilled to have the opportunity to continue working in communications for the town of Christiansburg, which already feels like home to her, and she especially fell in love with the area's natural beauty and proximity to a seemingly endless number of hiking trails. She enjoys rock climbing, running, and of course, swimming at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. She likes to cook, and she may be currently relearning how to play violin, so.
Come on up.
And we're very glad to have her.
I'd ask more questions.
Yes.
What brought you here from Los Angeles?
That's a good one.
Let's move into the story.
Yeah, so my boyfriend actually-
Yeah, so my boyfriend actually is working for Virginia Tech.
Enough said, okay.
Yeah, so, and I decided to come with him.
We're glad to have you.
I'm very happy to be here, yeah.
And you're a hokey now.
Yes.
Is that reduction?
No words ruined here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I have had the opportunity to work very, fairly closely with Anika. Anika, it's different than it's spelled, but it is, it took me a while, she gave me a pronunciation, and I keep it on the corner of my desk.
It's not working, right?
It's getting there, I was, at first I thought I was just going to have to call her Nike, but we finally got it, I was burned away. But she is, she does a really, really good job. I've watched some of the things that she's done, and we have a really good one-two punch, again, in public relations.
We have two people.
Yes. Anika, are you also from Southern California originally?
Originally, yes, a little bit north.
Is this your first time in Virginia when you moved here?
This was, yeah.
Wow. Well, glad to hear. Wasn't a culture shock, was it?
Yeah, I, everyone said that, yeah, I really liked it here, so.
What's your favorite?
Not a bad culture shock.
If you could pick one thing about Christiansburg that you like?
Well, one thing I like, like a favorite thing, that's it.
Yeah.
So I think I really like the sense of community, because I came from Los Angeles, and it's just, it's just difficult to, you know, connect to people, it's just a huge piece, so, I really like that, but I'm good.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Old business, we have council action on conditional use permit request by ETR Investments for a game room in the B3 General Business District at 77 Scatergood Drive Northwest, tax number 496-20-4. The public hearing was held on May the 9th, 2017.
Our move that we approve.
Okay. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, I will test you, will you call the roll?
I will. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
And Councilman Sykes?
Aye. 6-0, thank you very much, Eddie, congratulations. A lot of big things over there.
Thank you.
Under our new business, we have the adoption of emergency operation plan, an EOP, and I think there is a resolution that we have to do yearly, is that correct? And it basically states that we do have a plan, we do have a director, and we do have a coordinator. The director is the town manager, the coordinator is Chief Hanks, that correct with the Fire Department, and if, I can see it now, but anyway, that's kind of what we have, we need to, we need, oh, you got it right there. No, I'm good, I mean, it just makes, it just states that we are in compliance as normal. Mr. Wingfield, would you like to add anything to that?
No, that's basically it.
It's an annual plan.
Well, that I believe that, as a vote, I guess it's necessary, I'd move that we approve of the emergency operations plan as presented in the agenda packet.
A second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Is this the, is this the plan that Mr. Delaney's involved with?
It is, correct. The only, the only changes in the plan were name changes from, you know, the last plan we approved, it had Mr. Helm's name on, and had the old, the police station dispatch center in it, and we had to update it to the new regional 911 authority, and then change of the names in the plan. Plan, plan's basically the same plan that we've had in place, just a few minor changes and name changes and location changes.
Substantive is more.
Correct. All right, we have that motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
That is 6-0, and also, let me just take a second to welcome Amber Haskins to us.
Hello. Thank you.
She's feeling, she's pinch hitting tonight for the Stipes, I think Brad just, and family wore out on vacation.
Well, it's a slightly more to it than that, yeah, we got back after 6:00 PM, and there's some other factors, but we appreciate Amber.
Anytime. Thank you.
Very good. Items for considerations in the engineering department to be presented by Director Wayne Nelson. Church Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First agreement in front of you is a revised appendix A2 and D5 of a VDOT agreement for the Church Rigby-Ellis Storm Drains Project. VDOT identified additional funds in amount of $403,200, excuse me, $426 that we applied to this project, and we did so to hedge against potential rock that we'll encounter, might encounter, also to extend the project from, from Cambridge Street on up Ellis to Kings Street. So, the request of council is to approve of this revised agreement, appendix A2, for this project.
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question, Mayor?
Certainly.
And I'll put you on the spot, Mr. Nelson, because you know how much I appreciate personally what you do, but is this your idea to bring these, like a contract like this before council, or is it, is it the previous town manager, or, kind of eat this blunt?
It's the previous.
Okay, I, I trust you intrinsically, and I'm an engineer, okay, I understand about half of what I'm reading here, but I have complete faith and confidence in you and your ability to administer contracts, and I think, I think what we're looking at here, which, the next one's a good one, a pressure-reducing valve. I'd like to know, with the exception of Jim Lanson, if there's anyone in this room that knows what a pressure-reducing valve is.
We'll get to it.
But my point is simple, my point is simple, we, I appreciate what you do, and I'm not sure that this is something council needs to be doing, is looking at individual contracts for stuff we have no clue what the guts of it are. We get updates from you occasionally about what all the projects are going on.
Sure.
But I'm going to support, I'm going to support your recommendation on all five of these, I'll tell you right now, but in the future, for council's consideration, I don't think we need to be looking at contracts internally on projects that we've got capable staff to oversee.
I appreciate that.
They're funded, right?
Yeah. This is in a special funding, where we're making amendment or anything of that nature.
We've already agreed to, on the contract, Mr. Thomas.
I can support Brad on this, I think that's a very good point.
I mean, our meetings are getting longer and longer.
That's where we made the big bucks, too, you know?
To be quite honest, this is the tip of the iceberg, we're just getting started. These projects are going to start rolling along here.
I'll give that to council to consider, but in the future, I don't think we need to be in the, in the, inside of the whale here trying to figure out whether a rib is this color or something.
I think, yeah, I mean, in years past, at the times in which I felt like, well, it just really hasn't been a lot of these in years past, but recently, it's when there's been either a design change, obviously, which would perhaps change the, the color, if you will, of the contract in and of itself, but, again, Brad, you just mentioned, what's a pressure-reducing valve? I first, I looked at it with GM, I have no clue what that is.
I know, I'm going to waterline, but, I mean, really, what do we need to know about this?
But, I mean, the only benefit I see is that, I mean, when you talk about it wrong camera, then again, we've already approved of these particular contracts, we've already had a, a vote initially on the contract, so.
True.
And so, now the public wouldn't be losing anything because they've already heard the discussion on the potential contract.
We have updates on, we have updates on the project.
Projects are in the approved budget.
Teresa, I think you might want to listen.
Yes, technically, contracts have to be approved by council, but we could put them on the consent agenda, and that way we wouldn't have, unless there's something that council wants to pull out for greater discussion.
Okay, yeah.
But, basically, what all you really need to, because the form will be approved by, by me, but all you really need to approve is the contractor, the amount, and the project, so you know what we're contracting for. The other alternative is to give Randy the authority to sign off on contracts up to a certain amount, and I could put something together, so anything under a certain amount can be handled administratively, but anything large...
I would rather...
Have we done this in the past? I mean, we, I mean, the consent agenda, that's something, yeah.
It wasn't done historically, and it was something that I brought up with a former town manager, but it wasn't changed, but technically, the only, you know, in order to be able to execute a contract, you have to be delegated the authority from council, so either delegate the authority to sign up to a certain amount, or, you know, create an ordinance where, you know, you can sign to a certain amount, and then certain things come to you, or, but...
Or improvement consent agenda.
Yeah, but, but technically, in order for a contract to be valid, it needs to be approved by council.
Me personally, I, I feel better with it, and it doesn't, don't take offense to this, Mr. Wingfield, at all, I feel better if it's, if we're going to do it in a short version, we do it on the consent agenda, that way it's part of the agenda packet, and that way the, again, citizens can see it, and if we have a question, we can then bring it up.
I would see the flow of information.
Right, I, for instance, if I have a question about what's a pressure-reducing valve, I can still bring that up, but, but I, I do think having it in the packet, there's transparency there, and that's what we're looking for ultimately, so, but I do agree with Brad, I, I mean, I like hearing about it.
It's precious here.
Do you like hearing about it? No, no, I like hearing from Mr. Nelson, because again, I hold him in a very similar stance to Roy, that he does, but, but then again, I think some of this is wasted on me, a little bit, as far as the engineering aspects.
I would theoretically agree plus what you, what you're doing, on how it's going along, that would be good, yeah.
We still have discussions.
We have, we have.
It'll be better on.
I'm just really looking forward to finding out what it looks like.
Yeah, we're going to find out, we're going to find out, wow, so if it's, if it's council's...
Can we amend the agenda, put the, whatever we can?
I would think that if you would like to listen briefly to all five and approve all five in one motion, that might help us out a little bit. Attorney, is that good?
Well, you're spending money, a contract, you're spending funds, it should be a real call.
We'd have to sit at a single vote.
Yeah, I mean, you can do it, you know, and that brings up if it's on the consent agenda, as long as you do it by a real call, it should be fine, but you're authorizing them to spend, I know you have money that's appropriated for capital improvement projects, but here is where you're actually, you know, you're getting the number amount, the contract.
That's where we're going on the record for authorizing, right? Okay. So, do we want to, do these individually?
I think we...
Just something.
Very good, then, do I hear a motion to approve number one?
I would move that we approve the revised appendix A2 as presented.
Church Rigby?
I would, I would move that we approve the Church Rigby-Ellis Storm Drains Project as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
And Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
All right, that is 6-0. Next on the list is pressure-reducing valve installation, and we're on the edge of our chairs.
That touches my heart.
One sentence or less, yeah.
The concrete tanks are in state of disrepair, and the pressure-reducing valves allow the, allow that the customers served by those tanks to be served by a tank that's at a higher elevation, it reduces the pressure, so the customers don't see a change in the water pressure when they turn the spigot on, or the pressure does not exceed what the health department regulates as the maximum.
That installation's approximately $40,000, Mr. Nelson?
Well, the, the budget's at 75,000, we, under small purchase, we solicited bids from five contractors, got this one, and with this contract and material cost, we will be right at budget.
Move that we approve the pressure-reducing valve installation contract as presented.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
That is 6-0, thank you very much. Downtown drainage improvements, North Franklin Street, project engineering design contract.
This is a design contract with D&amp;D Incorporated for the downtown North Franklin drainage improvements. The address is flooding on the east side of North Franklin, specifically 103, 107, 111 North Franklin Street, and this is a revenue-sharing project, we will get this project initiated this year.
Very good. Make the light, will you, approve the contract as presented?
Aye.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
Long-term water and wastewater extensions planning project contract?
This is an engineering study for the exit 114 area within our, inside and outside our established water and sewer boundary agreement with PSA. The, this is in conjunction with the exit 114 bridge replacement project, where we have requested a VDOT to place casing pipes under the bridge, where we can extend our utilities, outroute a, within our service area at a minimum, and it certainly does support growth in, in that area at that, at that interchange of the interstate. And this is with CHA Consulting Incorporated.
Is VDOT fitting those condos it's in?
Haven't seen the plans yet, but I understand the UCA says...
We would just pay the cost for the betterment of that.
That is my understanding as well.
It sounds really good, yeah. Do I have a motion? Does it move?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
Very good. And last, North Franklin Independence Intersection Improvement Project Noticeable Ward.
Noticeable Ward, a request to enter into a contract with DCI Shires. We bid the project, they were a little bitter. This improves the intersection, the turn lane, provides for pedestrian signal accommodations at the Independence and North Franklin intersection, and some drains improvements, and turn lane improvements, both turning onto North Franklin from Independence, headed south, excuse me, north, and then also on North Franklin Street, we are turning onto Independence to go west.
So, Mr. Nelson, this will not interfere, this won't have to be reconstructed with our upcoming project, the North Franklin corridor?
Correct.
Won't have to be tearing out currently down here and so on.
This has been coordinated.
Okay.
Our, our corridor project will tie right into this, and it's a revenue-sharing project, which will begin within the next two weeks, we believe, to, now that school is out, we want to be as substantial by 1st of August before school starts.
You're saying this will start, this project will start within the next two weeks?
Yes. We'll have a PR campaign beginning here very soon.
That's great. All right. Thank you, any questions? Any further questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Nelson, the, Brad mentioned the corridor project tie-in, and obviously that's something on our radar, make sure we don't, you know, have to undo any work that we've done, but one thing that's been missing up there, of course, is any type of pedestrian accommodations, especially with our kids that are coming across that rather busy intersection there, but I have a question about the Huckleberry Trail tie-in, or potential trail tie-in, because that's one of the next phases would be coming down in front of school and basically meandering its way, in front of the school, and basically meandering its way, if you will. Does that take into consideration where that would tie in, or how does that all fit together?
It does. That's coordinated as well with the corridor project. That's a federally-funded project, and this will be completed before that, and the same engineer has designed that project, and so that's coordinated.
Okay, so we have some continuity between the, with the engineer?
There is.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion, further discussion? Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. And we'll work on them. Getting this a little smoother next time. That concludes the new business that we have on the agenda. Our next is committee reports. Have any committee reports tonight from any of the?
No. We've had a Water and Sewer Committee meeting on regards to, and also Solid Waste. Mrs. Alderman, who had made a request, has actually, has asked to not pursue smoke testing on the property. I'll just pass that along to Water and Sewer, Solid Waste Committee.
Let me ask a quick question on that, Mr. Wingfield. Jim's here as well, and I actually see everybody here that pretty much at the meeting. My understanding, and that's certainly her right to do that, and we were trying to help it, my understanding is that means there is no other alternative. That would have been our last resort, correct?
That's correct.
And so, at this point in time, may I ask what the posture is as far as her?
She said that she would cover any cost herself if there were any sewer backups.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for all the work and hard work that you all put in for it, and trying to educate Henry now. Thank you.
Okay. Staff reports, town manager?
I'd like to send a public hearing for amendment to the sewer use ordinance for June 27th, if that's acceptable.
Amendment to the?
Sewer use?
Yes.
So moved, June 27th.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Other than, we have a public hearing that night on signage?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Also, I'd like to point out, Christiansburg Rescue has won the American Heart Association Mission Lifelines Gold Plus EMS Recognition Award. That's the highest award we can receive from them. Last year, we received the silver award.
That's great, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, do we need to vote on it, public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Debat motion to approve the request for a public hearing for amendment waters for the sewer usage?
We've got, we've got a motion in a second.
Got a motion is second.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Very good, six oh. Madam attorney?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Other staff, Finance Director Treasurer Val Tweedy to present a draft annual budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me the time to see the budget. We're going to take a little different approach to the budget presentation this year than we have previously. You all have hard copies in front of you that we printed out for you. There also, there is a PDF version of it up on the website as of this evening, I think, Melissa?
Excellent.
Okay, so it is up on the website. I usually don't post it until it's been presented to you. So that is up there, and.
I did that, clicker.
Aw, thanks. Looking at a comment, it's all friends. Just kidding. Here we go. Okay, so what I thought we'd do tonight is just kind of take a quick walk through the budget document, go through how it's laid out to help you read through it and understand it, talk about the highlights of the budget. You also all filled out a questionnaire, so we'll address some of the things that were addressed in the questionnaire. We'll talk about what some of the primary changes are, the revenues and expenditures, as well as staffing, capital projects. Wayne's going to talk about our capital projects that are presented in the budget. We're also going to have a presentation from Chief Sisson, Chief Toyle, and from Jim Lantini's on Public Works. These are the areas that are the largest parts of our budget, so we thought that it would be good to have them each present for just a few minutes on some of the high points of the budget that they all have, and that are an integral part of what you're looking at tonight. And then we'll finish up with just taking a look at the assumptions in the five-year forecast, and we'll be done. Probably take a little longer than we hope. The proposed budget was based on a number of meetings with directors, staff, and reviewing all of their information. They submitted their documentation in stages with expectations to expand and all their capital needs. There was an extensive capital request process for everything in their capital items. Spent a lot of time going through those and a lot of time putting together the CIP. So, this is our best effort to present you with a budget that we feel will sustain our level of growth and the customer service within the constraints of the funds that we have available and the priorities that have been set forth in Destination 2022. So, after a lot of review and trouble and toil, additions and deletions were made to budgets, and we now have this draft to present to you this evening. The questionnaire, you're going to see that we've addressed a lot of the things in the questionnaire throughout the presentation later this evening, but a couple of items that you won't specifically see addressed that I wanted to let you know that we are still working on. There was a question about moving forward with economic development and revolving funds and helping businesses and all of those items. And this is an item that we would like to shift to, but currently, the funding for that is with the Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBG. Those funds are currently tied up in the Park Street project, and that's what they have been committed to for the funding levels that we have. But what we'd like to do is, once we have completed that project and look at our long-term plans there, is maybe shift the funding that we get from CDBG to looking at some of the economic development and revolving loans that funding that we can use CDBG funding for. The other is merchant service fees. There was some discussion about changing the structure in which we do that. Once we get through budget this year, we are going to put out an RFP to look at those, and we'll come back to you with some information about shifting how we do merchant service fees on collection of our fillings. Herb site recycling is also something that I know Randy's working with you guys on, and we're getting that project moved forward. So, a lot of these, we'll come back to you within the next six months or so to talk about, and, you know, we may need to make a shift in the budget for that, but we'll address those as we get those items resolved. There just wasn't enough information or time to get it into the budget this year. I know there's some discussion about the donations or special appropriations policy, and the after-budget, we'll get together and talk about what are some of those changes that we'd like to see happen there. And then, difference in the methodology of distribution of the performance merit pool. Dave is working on that, and hopefully, we'll have some information for you in not too distant future. But for now, the plan is as it is. Whoops. Where'd it go? Okay, so just a quick walk through the budget. If you flip to the very first page, you can have a table of contents, and it pretty much takes you to the different exhibits and subject matters throughout the budget. One of the biggest differences in the budget presentation this year is that the 2018 draft budget numbers are in the very first column. In the past, they've always been the far column to the right, so if I'm focused left this year, it's a little bit different. The executive summary follows that with the changes and whatnot, and we're going to talk about all of those. It follows the table of contents. Then we have a number of pages that are just the organizational chart, the other boards, commissions, and advisory boards. And then Exhibit 1, which is on page 31, is a summary of the fund sources of usage, which then followed by the charts of revenue and expenditures. So this is kind of the chart. These are the numbers that you're always looking for. Hopefully, I can read them up here. So, 2018, we'll start the year with about a $20 million fund balance. General fund revenues and expenditures will leave in excess and operating at about 3.9. Capital acquisitions at a level of 2, and then in excess of a little over 1, 8.8, I think that number is. And then we have the support for the cemetery, and then the enterprise, stormwater, and governmental capital projects. Those are all the different projects that we have going and that are in the budget. So those are all pretty much capital items, with the exception of cemetery, where it's some operating support for the cemetery. So, in rollover funds, we're looking at about 5.4, 4.5 million, and we're looking at adding some fund balance to assigned reserves, like the wastewater treatment plant, Parks, Christiansburg Park Recreation Development, and a lot of our other funds. And they're listed out there in the budget document, and that number, we're looking at about 800,000, which will leave us with a fund balance at the end of the year of 14.4 million. Our low-level required reserve is 35%, which is a little over 11 million, above 20 million. So it puts us right around the 39% to 40% area at the end of the budget cycle, if we met everything as forecasted. So where does all the money come from? Where are our revenues? As you can see here, about 21% comes from water and sewer, almost 15% from meals tax, 7% from business and franchise, nine and a half from property taxes, and where's the other big one? 3.1 in state maintenance funds. So that's the majority of where all of our funding comes from. And then, where we send it all? About 17% is in public safety. That's police, rescue, fire, and building inspections. Public Works is about 14 and a half. Water and Sewer is about 14%. And those are pretty much the operating budgets, with some capital in the Public Works and Public Safety. Our major capital projects are pretty much, are consuming about 25% of the budget.
Always surprising to me that lodging taxes don't bring in more. I guess that's why it is.
It's a lot more than it used to be. We keep building more hotels. It's going up.
The parking recreation, that includes the PNR and aquatic as well?
It includes aquatics and parks and recreation.
All recreation.
All recreation, about 8.6%. And that's about 4.4 of our total budget. So, after those charts and graphs and summaries, you have Exhibit 2, which is the full detail of all the capital items, cars, trucks, anything large, as well as the capital project budgets. That's followed by a summary of revenues by type, and then the details follow that in Exhibit 4. Exhibit 5 is then the appropriations by each department and program. And if you look at that on page 46, you'll see, if you look at the very first line, it shows Town Council. That detailed budget can then be found on page 53. So between the table of contents and this reference here, it pretty much will get you all the way through the document. Anything that you're looking for, you can find there. And then Exhibit 6 is the detail of community support and development on pages 51 and 52. And then Exhibit 8 is our long-term debt obligations, and then the five-year forecast is found on page 105. So that's just a quick walkthrough of how to get through the budget. So here's some of the highlights. General fund revenues are expected to increase 2.5%. There is no tax increase proposed this year. There is no new debt proposed this year. The water and sewer rates are increased and included in this budget, as we discussed at the last work session, under option 7, suggesting an increase in parking fines from $10 to $25, and an increase in the consumer utility and consumption tax, which would just increase the maximum to $3 from the current 250. There is no change in the rate. It just changes the maximum.
Mr. D, can we go back since Mr. Sisson's here, if anyone's up for saving? Mark, do we, the tickets we write, enforcement tickets for parking, what percentage of those are in commercial areas where we're ticketing for handicap or filing? A very high percentage of that?
I would say 95%.
Okay, that's what I thought. I won't go with the other 5%, but that's what I wanted to, that's what I assumed. Okay, thank you.
On the expenditure side, we're looking at about a 1.7% increase in operating expenditures. There were requests for new staff, a total of 17, only three of which have been included in this draft, which will bring our full-time staffing employee count to 246. The new positions that we added were one patrol officer, one maintenance worker in Public Works, and one part-time worker in, maintenance worker in Parks and Recreation that we moved to full-time. He was already working 32 hours a week with medical benefits, so. And then the 2% merit pool is included, the 1% COLA is also included. And then there's about $9.9 million in capital construction projects, 5.5 of which are grant-funded. A million two is coming from stormwater fees, and the remainder is being supported with town funds or water and sewer revenues generated from the rate increase. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Wayne to come up and present capital projects.
Right, but before I get started, I'm going to, I'm not going to talk dollars. I'm going to give you a rundown of the projects, brief description. I do want to explain that first column is next year's budget, FY18. I've shown, we have shown FY19, where a project is phased, and the last two columns are the town and grant funding for FY18. First project is, which we discussed earlier, Church Rigby Ellet Storm Drainage Improvements. That continues the second phase of that project. Hans Meadow Drainage Improvements, that's in the Hans Meadow subdivision. That initiates design this year and construction next year. North Franklin Street Drainage Improvement, which we just discussed, engineering is initiated this year and construction next year, if approved. Town Branch Stream Restoration, that's a project that we previously had designed. We had received a grant, SLAT grant, from the EQ. We, when we bid it, we did, exceeded available funds. We had to turn the grant money back in, or reapply. We just received notification recently that we are slated to be funded this year.
This is the one near the aquatics, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Does it include the Midstream Bridge?
It does. It's, well, no, that doesn't. That's a separate project. This is the stream restoration itself from Arch Culver and Mill Lane up through the park to Stone Street.
But the bridge is on the other side, right?
Yes. Downtown Watership Study, this is also a grant we applied for through the Corps of Engineers. We have not heard from them yet. Certainly, we don't seek the grant that, that's a 50/50. 75,000 of that is grant money. And I will explain that that studies our downtown area, the drainage coming to downtown, and how we may minimize, mitigate some of the flooding that occurs. Next, we'll move to transportation projects. First is Park Street. That's our ongoing project. These funds will finish the projects out after July 1st. Crispin Mill Road, Ray, the rail grade crossing project, that's a HCP-funded project, and we anticipate starting that this year, excuse me, this calendar year. Independence Boulevard, Turn Lane, we just discussed. Huckleberry Trail Phase 3, that extends Huckleberry from Food Line, essentially through Oak Tree and the school to Independence Boulevard. We are planning an extension down Independence to Gold Lake, as well as trying to establish a trailhead along Scatting Drive. Arbor Drive Sidewalk, sidewalk improvements along Arbor Drive, from State Electric to. Arbor Drive Sidewalk, sidewalk improvements along Arbor Drive from State Electric to the Hardee's, and then that's, that's basically it. Scope of the project. Quinn W Stewart Boulevard Signal, that provides for the signal at Quinn W Stewart, as well as we're planning for the eventual construction of the connector road with that.
And that's hopefully going up the end of the summer?
Pardon me?
The light is hopefully going up at the end of the summer?
It'll, yeah, begin, project will begin this fall.
Mr. Nelson, real quickly, the grant funding price there, which is about three fifths of the total, that includes any alternative, any and all sources of funding, not just from a, from a grant, but also from any private as well, correct?
We have, we have private funding, and we have received that money.
Okay. And so the town commitment of the seventy-one is the two fifteen?
Yes.
Very good.
What is it? Project Excuse it, Advertiser, and I'm going to write it down.
That, it's in, we're close to the third sense stage of design, so we, I'd have to check the schedule to see where we are, but I can provide you with that information.
There's anticipation that it's going to be sooner than late, if that sounds like?
Yes. We're moving forward with that project.
Be early fall or late fall?
Early.
Early, early.
October, early. Next project, Roanoke Street Sidewalk, sidewalk addition along Roanoke Street from Robert Street to the County Government Center. Again, that's designed this year, and then construction next, as with Arbor Drive. Capital Paving Program, we have no grant funds to hand to VDOT this year. The New Franklin-Cambray Interchange Improvements, this demonstrates the design fees for FY eighteen and then construction dollars for FY nineteen. Depot Park Trail Extension, this is a new project that we have been notified by VDOT that we are slated to receive funding. Transportation alternative funding for this project, provided the Commonwealth Transportation Board approves it, and that will extend the trail from, from Mill Lane to Depot Park, as well as the, the bridge over the creek to connect the Aquatic Center and, and connect to Prober as well.
The bridge is part of that?
The bridge is, yes, yes, part of that project.
One quick question, Mr. Nelson, just about the North Franklin-Cambray Interchange Improvements. That's what we were, those, now that we were alluding to earlier about the, with the Independence and Franklin construction, that we didn't want that to have any type of interference with that project when it comes due. That's, that's one of the most necessary things in town. Everybody hates Franklin, that, that occurred, set up all of us. But actually, just to be candid, Mr. Nelson, and again, I'm not an engineer, and I don't, I don't claim to be, but when we saw those options, if you will, and the options were graded, and the ratings came back, and I think they did not take into consideration the, the, if you will, the traffic reduction by virtue of the planned road from Pepper's Ferry over to where Trinity Baptist Church is located. I want to say that the estimated thirty percent reduction in traffic volume at that intersection. Just speaking candidly, I guess I, I came away from that meeting with a sour taste, thinking this is the best we could do, or best that would, could be proposed. Is, is that pretty much on the design? Are we locked in to, we've had all these different options. Is there any other options that may come to light? I just felt like I got rumblings from some people in the crowd and myself. I just, I kept trying to see that would really work, and I don't know. I guess none of them were just jumping off the page. Certainly, some were better than others. Are we pretty much nailed down, if you will, to those options at this point? One of those and that last one we looked at, which would have the ratings of not F, so we would?
Correct. Yes, we are. And when we get to the public information design meeting, we will have a, a simulation of the traffic. I hope that may calm some, some concern.
Well, the reality is, you can only do what you can do. I mean, you're very limited.
It's a very, very difficult location, and I made the comment to VDOT, short of this, we need to go to an overpass, and then we're talking big bucks.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I didn't even get a stop, but I, I saw that there, yeah.
We are putting ourselves in a position, even down the road, at twenty forty, if, if we want to make some additional improvements and involve the railroad, we can also further improve it, but not have to spend the money right now in the time. We're on a, I know, we're on a very tight schedule with VDOT. They're cracking the whip on us, and that's fine. We can handle it, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Park Street, one hundred and five, that's the CGDB contribution that'll be applied towards the Park Street Sidewalk Project. Downtown Enhancement, funding there to close that project out and pay the contract, any remaining, I mean, remaining funds that he's, he's doing. Move to water wastewater. We have pump station upgrades to Craig Mountain Pump Station and Edgewood Pump Station. And on the wastewater side, we have College Street basin I and I, and we have Phase Two, which we commonly refer to as Phase One and Phase Two. That makes, provides for improvements to our sewer system from Crab Creek through town to Hickok and on up to, towards College Street. The Monague Street Sewer Replacement, that's, we, part of that project when it's bid, that improves the sewer line on Monague Street. And then finally, the Arrowhead Sewer Study, that contract was recently approved by you, and that'll be continued in FY eighteen. That concludes. If you have any more questions, I can answer them now or at the work session.
One last question. The two hundred thousand dollars, the railroad crossing project, you don't have to go back to it. Do we have two hundred thousand dollars in down funds in that project?
Well, it, those, those numbers will be updated.
Okay.
VDOT went to Central Office and secured more HCP funds for us. So our figures will go down.
Okay.
The railroad charges went up.
I, I remember that, but I just want, that's a big number, two couple hundred.
Yes.
Couple hundred grand in there for that. And the only reason we're doing that are, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a worthy project, but the reason it was enticing for us to do is because it was fully funded.
And those numbers don't reflect the numbers as, as they will end up being. When we now bring that contract forward.
Okay. Thanks. That's all the things that stuck out to me.
Mr. Nelson, not only did you do that, but what would you, if you had to guess, how much would the town be funding for that?
Well, if I had to guess, be under a hundred.
High-end, under a hundred, or a little?
I, I'll say high-end, a hundred. You know, I, I swallow hard when I get the numbers from Guerrero, but they admit that fortunately, I think we have a great public works department. They work well with the local railroad crews here and the staff, railroad staff, and that, that has a big bearing on, on the amount of money we can save, or we can work together as, as a team. In fact, they told me that.
Thank you.
You've got some good projects here, the sidewalk projects, and I think Depot Park, and people in the town are going to recognize us and appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, so some other new initiatives that are in this budget are the design of our wayfinding signs, which you approved that contract a few weeks ago, update the town website, upgrading and improving our technology background, or backbone by upgrading servers, software, data backup and recovery solutions, and IT management systems. There are consultant fees for researching and planning for the new ERP or Enterprise Resource Management, which includes all the financial software as well for that system. Upgrading the phone systems for a police department and wastewater treatment plant. Aquatics has added some after-school programs. HR has been working on new strong employee safety programs and education and safety to improve life for our employees and also to reduce our workers' compensation claims and costs. They're also working on a new orientation program for new employees to improve customer service and employee knowledge, creating ambassadors, is kind of what we're calling it, is educating basically all town employees about what all of the different people with, in the town, and do, what their work is, so that any time that they're approached by a citizen, that they can be knowledgeable about how to refer them, where to refer them, what kind of services that we offer, or where they may go to get that. So kind of creating ambassadors, if you'll remember that. And then really big one was the reduced cost of the health insurance, employee premiums, family coverage, moving to that as a high deductible plan. And moving into that, we're going to be kicking off enrollment meetings next month, on Case Effect July one. So we've got a big push going to get that moving forward.
Val, on that note, the health insurance, and you can embarrass me very publicly here, if need be. Have we been provided information about what the goal is on those reductions? Because I, I remember some figures we had about what our employees were paying for family coverage and so forth. Have we been provided information yet, or not?
I don't, Randy, did you call any?
I think we just told you verbally.
Yeah.
We're over four hundred dollars towards the family plan, lawfully.
Thank you. Okay, continue, sorry.
So those are some of the other initiatives. And with that, we're going to, Jim.
Good evening. As Val said, I'm here tonight to present a few key items that are proposed in the Public Works portion of the town's twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget. The first item is the facility assessment. This is a full assessment of all town facilities and analysis of current conditions of each, including age, design, construction, material, and depreciation. The resulting information will assist in creating preventive maintenance programs, capital improvement, and strategic planning initiatives. The assessment will consist of structural components, mechanical systems, energy efficiency, security, heating and air systems, and it also supports Destination Twenty Twenty-Two Goal Three Point One Zero, pursue a program of reducing operating costs through more efficient use of energy.
Jim, I was going to ask you, the, the meetings that we had, the two-day retreat, this directly was spoken about, to be proactive and not reactive on aging and capital base that we have in buildings and things of that sort. Is this a direct correlation with that?
Yes, it is.
Absolutely. This is fantastic.
This will allow us to be more proactive in planning.
We had also talked, I think, about even having a, a group of Public Works employees or individuals who would be assigned to basically doing that type of work in, in-house. I know we're, this is not what we're doing today, but in the future, but that's something you see with being, be proactive, that being a necessary component in the years ahead to having people that would be specifically delegated to do those types of internal improvements.
Yeah, to a certain extent, as long as it's cost-effective versus, versus contracting.
Absolutely.
Okay, our next item is the brush collection service. This service will provide an efficient, efficient and effective brush chipping service for the town citizens on a monthly basis. In turn, this service will increase the operational efficiency by reducing the volume of brush collected during the spring and fall cleanup. For this service, we have a, one proposed FTE maintenance worker position in the budget. We have the proposed capital equipment purchase of the brush chipper in the budget also. Along with the, the brush chipping, the personnel and equipment will also, can support and will support right-of-way maintenance and trail maintenance operations, concrete maintenance operations, and street maintenance operations.
The schedule hasn't been determined yet, has it? What houses will come at what time of the month? Are you doing this?
No, no, we haven't laid that out yet. Our next item is the jet back truck. The primary purpose of this piece of equipment is to improve the efficiency of the sewer collection system by reducing sewer overflows, obstruction, fog removal, and the potential of property damage claims. To date, this fiscal year, we've had twenty-nine overflows, ten due to obstructions. We responded to a hundred and twelve obstructions, and we've had four property claims that resulted in three thousand dollar payment. This piece of equipment will also support stormwater maintenance and utility locating. It also supports, supports Destination Twenty Twenty-Two Goal Two Point Eight, keep the wastewater treatment facility in front of the growth pressures and regulatory mandates.
Jim, what is, certainly, we're not stupid enough to think we're going to remove fog. What is fog, what is F O G in acronym for?
Fatsoles and greases. That's building up in a, in a pipe. This truck will give us the ability to go through there and clean those lines and remove it from the manholes before it gets to the plant.
Makes a lot more sense than the log we're, I can't imagine this.
It's pretty damn powerful, sucking all the fog we get.
And there's more to come with fog. Ryan's actually drafting and creating the program, and we'll be bringing that forward, too.
You all already have a, a, what is it, the, from the companies, the, like, the different restaurants and that, you all have a program in place to where you go out and monitor that, correct?
That's correct.
Which, which that way it's not finding its way into our system itself, where there's alternative means of, of, I guess, exposing or getting rid of it.
Yeah, grease interceptors and so forth.
That's right. I think you all presented a couple years ago about that, that's a really neat program.
Our next item, it also supports Goal Two Point Eight. It's the Enterprise Capital Improvement Projects that we, we've got placed in the budget. The first one being the System Control Data Acquisition, the SCADA upgrade. This system will allow for the monitoring and control of critical components in the water and wastewater infrastructure. The facilities that will require these updates is the wastewater treatment facility, the wastewater pump stations, and the water distribution system. The second major project that we've got proposed in our budget is the Altria Disinfection System. The project is designed to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant disinfect, disinfection system, which is currently obsolete. We're running into trouble getting parts for our current system. And our last is the Town Beautification Program. The Town Beautification Program will focus on designing current and proposed landscape within, landscape areas within the right-of-way to complete, complement the overall branding identified through the wayfinding sign project. Areas of focus will be the medias, the Main Street Corridor, entryways, facilities, and this also is supported, supporting the Destination Twenty Twenty-Two Goal Seven Point Two, establish a beautification project and entryway program at the interchanges and major, major entry points of the town. In closing, these are only a few areas that I wanted to highlight from the Public Works portion of the budget. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present this information tonight, and I'll be available during work session to answer questions, to discuss further.
We have two systems.
Hand these out, which are probably best used in the work session, but let's move So I'll be very brief, but there are a few items that Mr. Twitty has asked me to brief on this evening, and I will be available during work session to elaborate on them. As you recall, in December, I came to Ford Council to present our strategic plan and to also talk about our mythology for strategic planning. During that briefing, I provided our vision and mission under Objective Three Point One, which is still a viable strategic planning item within our organization. And that objective simply is to obtain authorization to increase the staffing level by three sworn officers, advertise positions, hire and acquire funding to outfit three personnel, and those would be patrol officer positions. You will see that currently in the graph, there's one patrol position listed. That's because two of those have already been lifted from the budget, so I'm here to discuss now and in work session of one position that's still in the budget. I did discuss at that time, and also in our last budget discussion for last year, about I did discuss at that time, and also in our last budget discussion for last year, about the scope of the mission and how the mission has changed due to manpower needs to support the mission expansion of our organization, of our community, based on growth in our commercial enterprises, and also in the travelers and visitors to our community. During the 2016-17 budget, town council granted one patrol position, which was funded and put into place during this current budget year. With that addition, we are three positions short of our strategic planning goal, which is 2015 to 2018. Also briefed in on statistics that I provided in last year's budget, and that is simply how busy this community is and how busy our patrol officers are. I give just a quick reference by graph to the number of incidents reported to the Virginia State Police each year. I give a reference to communities our size that are local to us, one being Blacksburg and one being Salem Police, that we have less sworn officers but respond and report more incidents than those jurisdictions. The second... Why is that, Chief? I'm sorry, go back to that. You pulled up... You know, I'm always... I think all of us are... Can, you know, can find statistics that say what we want to say, and my trust level with you is very high, you know? But why is that? Is that... I mean, are we... Are people on their ear here? Or is it the way that these data are reported? What's your assessment of that, honestly, as far as...
Is it retail?
Yes.
Honestly, the reporting mechanism is similar. We are mandated by state police to report every criminal incident, so the numbers are solid from every jurisdiction.
And they are from Christiansburg?
Correct.
Does that mean they're... Would you also say that those are liable from our neighboring communities as well?
I would say yes, because they are mandated reported items.
Okay.
I would say that our jurisdiction, with the amount of retail and the daylight traffic that we encounter, it's a very busy... It's a very busy atmosphere, especially during the daytime hour. I do have statistics that I can provide on fraud, indemnity, shoplifting, some of the retail crimes that we deal with, that some of our other jurisdictions do not.
Okay.
The second item that I know that we will discuss, and I think there's already been discussion about that in previous work session, is the five patrol vehicles that have asked to replace. In the past 10 years that I've been the police chief, I have requested four patrol vehicles every year. This year, I've requested five, just because of the vehicle rotation plan that we done earlier in the year from town administration. Our goal was to replace vehicles when they reached 125,000 miles. These five vehicles that I'm requesting to replace are patrol vehicles, and you will see that they range from 2003, 2006, and 2007, with at least 125,000 miles on those vehicles other than Vehicle 703, which we need to replace because it has major electrical and other damage that is not productive.
Is that consistent with neighboring localities? Or... One statement I made in our work session is, I think it's real important that we look and act like our... The community is conservative. We serve a conservative community. And I just... Since you weren't at the last meeting, that's been, you know, something that we talked about, was looking and acting like the community we serve, which is conservative.
Yes, sir, I agree.
And so, with that, those numbers, cars are changing, and again, my trust level with you is high. But is that about what other localities are doing as far as rotation policy goes? Are we acting like...
I would say yes, if not, a little more conservative.
Is that right?
Yes. You would take... I mean, for example, you take Vehicle 701, which is a patrol vehicle, everyday operation patrol vehicle, that's 10 years old and 157,000 miles. You will see in the packet that I provided, I've provided maintenance costs for each of the five vehicles that we are asking to replace, and you will see that there are maintenance issues and numbers that are starting to catch us on these older vehicles. Our plan before was to replace vehicles at eight years. You know, if you recall, five years ago, five and six years ago, we replaced no patrol vehicles. In fact, not as to a point now, within the 150,000 mile range with some of these vehicles. And I really firmly believe that we've got to get at least these five out of the fleet to move forward and be consistent, with the plan of trying to relocate out of 100 places like that.
I mean, the numbers really are relatively low, and I guess you're saying they're low, but it's a stop-and-go going that these vehicles have to go through all the time. That's why they get not torn up, but that's why the maintenance is so high. Is that right?
Correct.
Isn't that highway miles? These are stop-and-go miles?
157,000 miles on a patrol vehicle, in my opinion, is 300,000 on a normal vehicle highway miles. Those are really tough miles that's been put on this vehicle.
Okay, one last question.
Yes, sir.
Since we're having this, and this will go a long way towards settling myself on this, but is our ratio of cars per personnel in line with other localities that are nearby?
I'd say they're consistent. I mean, there's some agencies that have a...
Very similar. You're saying they're very similar.
That have a different fleet system. Some have more vehicles than us, and some have less. And I can also provide those numbers from neighboring jurisdictions.
I'm frustrated, you know, these are some blunt questions, but the ratio of vehicles to uniformed officers, you're saying is very similar to other localities?
I think they're very similar, but I would have to address those agencies and pull their numbers, because I can't speak specifically to what their fleet numbers are, but I'd be happy to do that for council.
And Chief, since we've opened the subject, I figure we've done this in work session, but just, I may ask you, since you just commented on it, the vehicles that have been in the budget, which remain in the budget from what I've seen thus far, I think I saw four, maybe it's five in there.
No, just four.
There's four.
Request was for five.
Right, there's four in the budget. The initial request was for five, correct?
Correct.
The budget, four found a way into the budget. The initial request for the patrol was three, one found a way into the budget. Does that change at all? I've taken that will be separate from the vehicle rotation plan, correct?
That's correct.
Doesn't really have any correlation between the two?
Personnel numbers have no correlation to the number of vehicles in the fleet.
Okay. And as far as vehicles assigned to an individual patrol officer, obviously, there's a rotation, yes, but is there vehicles assigned to each particular officer in general, or...
We do have some fleet vehicles that are dual-purpose. For example, daylight shift, it's assigned to one officer, and midnight shift, it's assigned to the other officer coming in. There are individually assigned vehicles to personnel, for example, tactical team members, supervisors, and I have provided information in your packet to show you our every vehicle and every vehicle's destination, whether it's a take-home vehicle, the number of take-home vehicles, because I knew that would be discussed in work session. I want you to have that, and I can answer those questions.
Okay. The last question I've got, the... With the rotation, again, our rotation policy, where we have, obviously, our vehicles exceed the amount of people we have on the force, because we have to have vehicles to rotate. Are those utilized when, I guess, the individual's main vehicle is in the shop, or being maintained, or being serviced, or something along those lines?
Correct. We have two spare patrol vehicles, and those two spares are utilized from vehicles that are out of service.
And none of these are the spares at this point?
No, they are not spares. Those are active vehicles.
Those are active.
Correct. Zero 31 was... I guess since now, I have four left in the budget than I have five. Zero 31 is a Tahoe that was driven by major vehicles retiring, so that's one of the vehicles I was gonna phase out. 602, 701, 703, and 704 are fleet police vehicles that are on the street, black and white police cruisers. So, I think I'll probably end up keeping 031, and I'll replace them patrol vehicles at this point.
Your case is a lot stronger with you present than when you're not present.
That's why I said...
Is it good with the tires? I'm sorry.
We do our own maintenance?
No, we do not. We do not have a maintenance department.
Who does most of our maintenance?
We use local vendors in the community to do maintenance. I think it's... I provided in your packet just a few things, a justification statement for the police vehicles that we're purchasing, a request for capital acquisition form, which gives you general information on the vehicles we're replacing, and also the reason why we're replacing those vehicles, a maintenance summary sheet for each of the five vehicles that we're requesting to replace, our take-home vehicle policy that was implemented in August of 2012, and the take-home vehicle, a list of every take-home vehicle, which, you know, we had this discussion, we had it last year. Council, we have... I'm happy to report that when we implemented the policy in 2012, we had 12 vehicles outside of Montgomery County. Currently, with through attrition, as we knew would happen, we have six going outside, and those are essential vehicles to police operation.
What happens with these automobiles? When you get rid of them?
Sir?
What happens with these automobiles?
Well, most of the patrol vehicles are in such bad shape, we do sell those, and the money comes back in to the general fund. Normally, on a police vehicle with 157,000 miles, we make it 2,000, 3,000 if we're lucky.
Okay, thanks.
Last up tonight, we have Rescue. Chief Coyle will present your ask and question.
Mayor and the council, thank you. It's always a great honor to address you. So, I want to talk a little bit about our FY18 program. At the very end, I'm gonna go through a couple of the items that are in the capital budget request, but really, what I kinda wanna do is talk to you about the initiatives we have, and the programs we have going, and how we're gonna spend the money that have so graciously given us in the past, and hope we'll continue this year. General Fund budget request, as you're aware, is relatively flat. We can try to be very lean, get stewards of money there, so the general fund request is very flat. Our focus as an agency, primary focus, excellence in patient care. If you think about EMS, EMS has evolved in a very rapid pace. EMS, the way I experienced it 10 years ago is very different now, and certainly, from the way it was when I started as a much younger man 30 years ago, we've seen incredible changes. It's evolving at such a rapid pace. The National EMS Management Association actually takes the position that we should change the name from EMS to paramedicine as a discipline, to recognize the complexity and the professionalism that are necessary to deliver this service. It also reflects that, you know, over the last several years, there's been a diminished emphasis on EMS or rescue or paramedicine as simply a transport system, but rather, we have become an integrated partner in a healthcare delivery system that causes increases in patient outcomes, positive increases, from the minute we make contact with the patient. So, we've become integrated partners in healthcare. And at Christiansburg Rescue, we embrace that vision. That is our mission, to become integrated partners and deliver excellent patient care starting when we arrive on scene. So, some initiatives, some things that have happened in years past and are gonna continue. I was a little worried about putting this slide up here, because I didn't get Melissa's permission, but since the town manager has already mentioned it, I feel pretty safe. We are actually very proud. We just got awarded this, the HA's meeting was held in Lynchburg a couple days ago, and we have received the highest award from the HA for heart care. This is the EMS Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award, and I think only three in the state have gotten this. I think Salem, I may misspeak, so I don't want to put in Abington and us, are the only three that got the Gold Plus Award this year. And this is in recognition of our emphasis on getting patients who are having heart attacks, people whose heart are starving for blood. We get them to a cath lab in a timely manner, and we do it on a repetitive basis. We had some of the best times in the state. This involves an internal focus with our members, getting them to do the right things. It involves having the right equipment. It involves having the scheduling, and things deployed correctly, and it involves working with the hospitals to get the patients to the cath lab quickly. So, we're very, very proud of this award. Now, I've gotta stop talking, because Melissa's gonna do some press releases on this, and I don't want to steal the thunder, but we're very, very proud of this.
Mr. Coyle, Chief Coyle, one question real quick, though. The commitment you to the East Coast Revenue Recovery Funds to outfit the police cruisers with the...
Yes.
I take it that would also play a role into this as well? I'd say community commitment?
Yep, absolutely. And actually, more so in the second half. Now, the first half is the heart attacks where they're still alive.
Yes.
The second half, and I'm gonna talk about that right now, so thank you for that.
I immediately hit myself.
Cardiac arrest survival. So, as you're aware, we leverage those funds, and we did put AEDs in every patrol car, and it is the norm now to go to a subject unresponsive call and have one or two police officers inside who've already deployed their AED and the first aid kits that we've helped them assemble. So, it's fantastic partnership between the agencies. Second thing I really want to talk about, so since I came on board, we've had a focus with helping people who have out-of-hospital cardiac arrest survive. One of the big changes that we made, and this happened several years ago, was we started working them on scene. So, if you or your loved one goes into cardiac arrest, your heart stops beating, and we show up, we are not going to scoop you up really fast and take you to the EOR. Why not? Because that's not how you save lives when people are having cardiac arrest. The mission of EMS, that integrated partner, is to take the resources to the scene and save that person right there. So, we... You know, this wasn't an original idea with me, I wish I could say that, but we copied the systems that are really high-performing, King County, Washington, Lake, down in North Carolina. We said, what are you folks doing to save your incredible save rates? These are the things they're doing. So, we started working cardiac arrest on scene, and we've been doing that for several years. We added in the AEDs to all patrol cars, which has really helped. The thing that has come about this last year, and we're gonna be building on in FY18, is something we call our code teams, and this is part of our outreach to the community. If you think about the ramifications of working a cardiac arrest on scene, you now have a whole other group of patients, and that's the family or friends of that person who's lying down on the floor having CPR done to them. So, we actually have a group of counselors, ministers, some are life members, the agency can no longer run calls. They actually respond to the scene and take over kind of the emotional and spiritual support for the family, for the providers, and they provide an invaluable service. Recently, we had a pretty tragic event out of hospital. I can't violate confidentiality, you go with details, but the family member of one of the patients, the patient, was a student at Virginia Tech. So, our code team actually put the family in their Tahoe, drove them to Virginia Tech, got the girl rather than telling her by phone, and took her to the hospital with them, and they had expired.
Heart attack is the number one killer, isn't it?
It's actually number two. That's a good lead-in, too, because we're gonna talk about the other one here in just a second, but it's really, really hot, and so, we really wanted to make sure we decreased the incidence of heart attack becoming cardiac arrest. So, I'm gonna get into cath lab really quick. The next thing, and this actually is one of the items that's specifically in the budget, there was one in budget last year, there's one in budget this year, pre-hospital ultrasound. We engage in very cutting-edge medicine at Christiansburg Rescue. We research the things that will help us take the best care of people that live, work, and play in Christiansburg. They deserve it, they expect it, and that's what we want to deliver. So, pre-hospital ultrasound has numerous benefits, and there's also gonna be some releases on this, I won't talk too much tonight in the labor, but trauma patients, helping us determine which location they will go to if they're in a traumatic incident, medical patients, there's a lot of medical uses pre-hospital for ultrasound. It's a very specialized skill, requires extra training, and only the paramedics amongst our groups are allowed to do this. But we're really excited to bring some board. We're the first agency in this area to do ultrasound, but it is something that is coming nationwide. A big initiative that we started several years ago, one of our college students brought this to my attention, that there was a need we could fill, we actually have been pushing the sepsis alert program in this valley. You mentioned heart attacks being killers, cardiac arrest. Sepsis is actually a bigger killer of patients than those cardiac events, but it's not as... It doesn't have the mystique, you know? So, it doesn't get the publicity. Sepsis is a systemic response by the body to overwhelming infection. It is lethal, and it kills people, and the findings to determine somebody is septic are often subtle. So, we have instituted a program, the sepsis alert program. We actually draw lactic acid on patients, and that's a blood test, and one of two agencies in Virginia that do that. We kept pushing the data to the hospitals, and pushing and pushing, and finally, they said, you know, there's something here. And so, now, with one of the two local hospitals, we have demonstrated that we are greatly reducing the time of the patient, our contact, to them being in a critical care unit where they're getting the care they need to fix the sepsis, critically helping those patients. So, the sepsis work program will continue on in this fiscal year. A little bit about who we are. We have 81 volunteer members, and there's a spreadsheet, I think we'll talk about some analysis during the work session portion. We have 10 staff, and, you know, we're really a hybrid volunteer-staff municipal EMS agency. When we talk about the evolution of EMS, you know, we are still a rescue squad, we're still very much a second family, as a group, but we're a very professional, forward-leaning, progressive EMS agency. So, a little bit about the call lines. And Chief Sisson also already mentioned that there's increasing demands for service on public safety. EMS rescue is not a means of this at all. If you go back, this is calendar years. This was calendar year 15, we were at about 4,000 calls. These are all within, you know, 100 or so. In calendar year 16, we had John In calendar year 16, we had jumped 10% to 4,400, and based on where we are as of year-to-date, we anticipate for calendar year 17, we may hit 4,800 calls. If I took you back several more years, that trend has increased. So there is an increasing demand on our services, and what we're seeing is that we're transporting incredibly sick patients.
Why is that, Joe? Is that your professional assessment of why it's running?
I think part of it, aging the population, access to healthcare, there's a lot of big mega trend reasons why that could be, and I think it's just because of the prevalence of people coming through the area during daylight. Our call volume actually, the spike actually occurs during daylight hours.
That's 10% a year. That's tremendous, Joe.
Yep. We're hoping, we're hoping that this is kind of a term in this year, and it doesn't continue past that, but this is where we're on track right now for calendar year 17.
And for a while, you were having trouble, people calling you because they had a cut or some other old thing like that. Most of these are legitimate?
Yeah. Every EMS system is going to have folks that use you because they have no other way to get to the EOR. So we recognize that. Most of these are legitimate, I hate to use that term, legitimate medical emergencies that require our intervention.
Joe, the majority of those calls are, they're occurring during the 6 to 6 hours again?
Yeah, the breakdown, I don't have the most recent for me, but we run about 60% of our calls on daylight hours and about 40% at nighttime. If you use the 6 to 6.
You're going to find nighttime at 6, night till 6:00 the morning.
Yes, sir.
Chief, would you contribute to those numbers? I know that these are just recent numbers.
Sure.
The availability of staff?
Yes.
Because, I mean, years ago, I mean, I would say prior to 2015, we weren't even close to even canceling 4,000 calls.
Well, yeah, that's correct. So in 2011, you know, we were coming under that strain as a lot of agencies were to cover daylight calls, and so end of 2011, early 2012, we made a lot of strategic changes to help make sure that we would cover the calls. So I think, you know, from 2012 forward, we're also seeing the effect of not turning over a lot of calls to other agencies, so we'll cover our own calls.
Right.
So future projections, you know, again, we can build by our strategic plan. You know, we anticipate that increasing call volume. I hope that it's going to kind of level out with this year, and we'll see that for the next several years, stick around that level. The increasing complexity of EMS certification and EMS in general, I already alluded to, we are transitioning, because the state is transitioning, away from four levels of EMS certification. Right now, we have the benefit of kind of a mid-level provider called EMT Intermediate, who can do almost everything where a paramedic can, but they're not a paramedic. Lot less hours training, lots less expense training. That certification is being phased out. It's a curriculum that's 19 years old, it's not supported anymore, it's being phased out. The curriculum that replaces it cuts out a lot of the heart care stuff. So what we will end up having to do, the AEMT is the new level, that will be our default level, we'll have to get people to the paramedic level, which is a little more complex than getting into intermediate. So as we plan strategically, we've got to figure out how we're going to deliver paramedic level care absent the intermediate certified codes. Increasing staff needs, as we look at our strategic plan, we know that we're going to have to kind of change the model for our staffing. Right now, we depend on flex time staffing, and quite literally, what we have is leftover availability. Most of our staff members work full-time for another system, and so they have certain days that they're off in any given month, and that may or may not match what we need to cover the holes in our schedule. So changing away from that model to people who schedules we can control is very important, and as the agency starts to accumulate up towards 4,800 calls, we recognize that we're going to have to have some additional structure in place to replicate need. You know, we'd see depth at the bench to help us evenings, weekends, times where we're kind of absent with staff supervision. Oops. Some specific items that are in the budget, and we can talk more about these during the work session. You know, we're asking for a camera system for our station. We have narcotics at our station, and to protect the people that are there 24 hours a day, it's kind of a needed upgrade. We don't have enough cameras in our system to capture all of the entrances, all the hallways, and most importantly, all of the size of the ambulances where we store all the narcotics, it's very important. The ultrasound device is in the budget. We're asking for one ambulance, at least out of revenue recovery. We have an ambulance that's kind of reaching its, the end of its safe life, and it needs to be replaced, and it's on a rotation plan. We are continuing the radio system background project that's been going on now for a while. We've actually bought most of the equipment for it in this fiscal year, and we're going to start doing the installment things in FY18. We're asking for one stretcher, which are rather expensive, about $17,000, and we need to replace our ATV. It's about 17 years old and is becoming obsolete.
Joe, the, and page four of the budget, it has that we have a rescue truck reserve?
Yes.
And that is EMS rescue trucks?
Correct, that's what I understand, yes.
And I noted that estimated as of June 30, it's provided, we put 25 in this year, which is what's allocated currently. We're going to be at 118. Give us an idea as to what the, you talk about a rescue-type vehicle, and then we're granted there's more than one.
Sure.
The one you're referring to is in the budget, what's the cost of that?
So an ambulance, the type ambulance that we use in this area, it's a truck front-end for the box, full drive, including the stretcher mount, power load system that we use, $200 to $225,000. It's a very expensive piece of equipment.
So us putting $25,000 into the budget each year towards, went for 10 years before we could frankly afford one, of course, just for inflation, not 11 years.
Correct.
And so with the revenue recovery funds, I mean, granted, that's one way to allocate, realize that. Val, that's, that 25 of those come out of general fund, correct?
That's a general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it the EMS or the fire that gets county funds as well?
Correct.
Oh, okay, four vehicles, right?
Yeah, we get a county allocation, which is a smaller percentage of our budget by far than what the county provides, and we use it to offset uniforms, training, and we are on a county vehicle rotation, so they come not very frequently, but we are on a county vehicle rotation.
Do they, some of the vehicles county-owned or county-purchased that you're currently utilizing?
Yes, sir.
I was thinking they were. I've noticed one thing, I appreciate the mutual aid reports that we give.
Sure.
And I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but it does appear to a layman that we do tend to answer a lot of calls in the county, a good portion, but in addition, as far as mutual aid, it seems like we are very entrenched in providing that mutual aid, which we should be. That's a required, it's a responsibility that we have, but it, one thing that has concerned me going forward a little bit, and you've been commenting on this through some emails and things, would be that I hope that we have a reciprocated type of attitude, if you will. And I'm sure we probably do.
But we do.
Maybe they just don't have the resources, but...
Absolutely.
It just seems that we answer a lot more calls than...
Than we have answered for us.
Perhaps.
We're a donor.
We're a donor, that's right, we're a donor.
I mean, we have really strong partnerships with the other agencies.
Absolutely.
They're great folks, but it's a resource availability issue. They do help us out when they get in a pinch, but we are usually the net provider, especially during daylight. Daylight tends to be county-wide when there's an issue.
But that was our basis for the revenue recovery, was that stacked call issue?
Yes.
That we knew we were getting, and we recognized it five years ago, four years ago, I mean, when you've got less than 4,000 calls, and now we're at 4,800, obviously.
That truck that you had that liked to replace, you have an idea of what kind of mileage it has?
I think it currently has about 112,000. I didn't check it today. I think it's about 112,000, and it takes about 10 months from the time the budget gets approved. We can't cut the PR to do enough order. So it's about a year from the time, so it'll have another year's worth of mileage. It'll be in the 120s, which for an ambulance, the way we drive them is really high.
Joe, one final thought, that award that you all received?
Yes.
Again, going back to revenue recovery, the whole purpose was not to replace that general fund. Again, as long as I've been sitting here, I'm never going to look to replace that general fund with that requirement. I think that would be a misstatement we would have made of the town citizens, but the reality is, we talked about enhancement.
Absolutely.
And I think, would you not say that's a direct correlation with receiving that and our enhanced level of service that we can provide, and that if we have that?
Oh, yeah, with the equipment we've been able to buy for revenue recovery, the ability of having hiring on part-time paramedics, phenomenal, what we've been able to enhance in terms of service.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we just did have a work session.
I think we're having a work session.
I think we already had a work session. So anyway, to finish up, just five-year forecast, I just wanted to touch a little bit about what some of the assumptions were in the five-year forecast you were presenting it. It includes vibrant growth inflation in all years of about 2%, and potentially a small tax increase in 2021 to help fund some aging infrastructure. The proposed water and sewer increase that is included for 2018, and as well as the forecast that we had with that rate study going forward into the 19, 20, 21, and 22. Program growth and expansion of services are not really forecast into it, it's existing services. One of the things that we did not incorporate at this time, because we didn't feel we had enough information about phasing and design, is the North Christiansburg Park. However, we have added a fairly decent chunk to the reserve funds, again, in this year's budget, to help fund that project. If we come up with plans later in the year, either we can go to that, or we can go to some other resources to fund anything that we might put in there, but that is not included in the forecast at this time. It also assumes that we'll continue to receive grants and capital funding for a number of streets, trails, and stormwater projects, and that we'll continue to set funds aside for specific projects. Those are the designated, assigned reserves that we have been doing every year, and that we will need to incur debt to fund some of the capital water and sewer projects around 2021 and 22.
But that would be somewhat minimized, obviously, by the...
Well, the goal would be, as we go through the project, is...
Zero.
Different projects that we can reduce that debt factor down through building up some reserves and some other things. That would be the objective. That was how it was built.
For the SOONS, it's a feel-good, SOONS, not a, we're not sure what federal...
No, I, no, those are, no, they're based on what we've been doing in the past and what a real expectation is that we'll continue to do that, but it would be unfair of me to say that we're going to do it all the time with $1, if we don't have some of the grants, and if we don't plan and set some reserves aside, yeah, things aren't going to work out nicely.
Well, Mr. Switz, since we're on the topic of reserves, I'm just looking at page four. Real quick question, the treatment plan reserve, which is, again, this makes me feel better or ask good about the budget as anything else, the fact that we put these monies aside, and that way we, it's not a rainy day, it's knowing that in the future, we're going to have to use these monies to remediate and to refurbish. But the treatment plan reserve is estimated at $200,000 to be added this fiscal year. It says estimating funds as of June 30 to 150. Is that a typo? It's supposed to be 350 perhaps?
No, that was a new fund. At June 30, that's at 630, 2017.
Yes.
That's not plus.
No, that's, it's a, it's treatment plan reserve of 200,000 to be added, but it listed as estimated in the fund at only 150.
Right, because I think we only put 50 in it last year.
Should it be 250 then? I'm just trying.
It's going to be 350 then.
That's not the...
Yeah. So it's to put 200 in it, there's 150 in it now.
So this is what's present, 350 as of June 30, 2018?
Yes.
Next year, when we look at this, 350.
And actually, if you look in the Capital Outway exhibit, it has another little chart of all of those reserves in it, and it also has the forecast for what we, with the reserves that we're adding, what it would be at 2018, at the end of 2018.
And so we actually...
That's by not more helpful.
Absolutely, and so we actually are adding these to our reserves the very last day of the, if you will, fiscal year, correct?
I usually put them in mid-year sometime. One of them was a new fund this year, so it's getting done a little bit later in the year, but most of them I put in three to four months in the year, so they're accruing interest throughout the year.
Very good.
So that, here's the work.
Wow. She could very well look. Any other questions? I'm disappointed that we're not able to do one with the new park. I will say, again, just a sidebar comment, it has been $100, but I'm tired of hearing the North Regional, North Christiansburg Regional Park, I just essentially call it a new park for now, we decided what we want to call it. But anyway, I am going to ask the chief, if, chief, have you learned of any new information of what you said tonight? Because we've got a lot more detail on some things that we have been discussing, this is just me talking, but if, those two items, the vehicle ratio per uniformed officer, if there's anything different than what you've said that is very similar, I don't accept that. And the other one is the, our vehicle rotation policy, that that's not, it's not, that is consistent with, you know, neighboring localities, and really, it goes to the point that, you know, of looking and acting like the community we serve, which is being conservative and frugal with our resources. So I ask you to correct, if you, if you had anything to add to that that's different, I would love to appreciate your note. Very good.
Let me add about the ambulance. Joe, you indicated that it would be almost a year before, let's say if we approved it now, it would be a year before if we arrived here?
Yes, sir. The factory usually takes about eight and 10 months from the time we put the order in, so we couldn't put the order in legally until, you know, July 1, so it'll be eight to 10 months after that.
Why does it take that long?
That's how long it takes to build an ambulance, they build them all to work.
Oh, really?
Yep. Yeah, we buy off a contract, a Rona County, I'm sorry, Montgomery County, third contract.
Okay, thank you. Council reports, Mr. Hough.
Well, I would just say that the Montgomery Museum, we had our cruising cars the, this past weekend, and they had 75 cars there, and they went over pretty well, and so Montgomery Museum just wanted to make sure that they, you know, they are, you know, trying to do activities here in downtown Christiansburg, and the next thing that's coming up is the Mountains of Music. That's all I have, Mr. Hough.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Stipes?
I have nothing to report, thank you, mayor.
Mr. Howell?
Nothing to report. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you.
You're saving ourselves, yeah.
I'd like to have, I'll make a request, that during one of our work sessions, that we make a, some time to discuss and review the insurance requirements for the vendors at the farmer's market.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I talked about that last week.
Do you think they're too great or not great enough?
Well, that's why I want to discuss.
We only do all of that. But anyway, that's kind of, we can do that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Can I, would that be something that can go to the farmer's market?
I don't know. I don't know if they're meeting very often right now, Mr. Shaw, Walter.
Well, Mayor Barker's.
I think the last time they met, it was just Sarah and Mr. Winfield, I thought.
And Melissa.
Unless I'm sorry.
Well, I'd make a request, because I'd educate myself.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I'm fine.
Very good. I will, the only thing I will really report on is the Wyandotte Artisan Festival downtown last Friday night, the DCI put on, it was a really good event. I don't know whether any of you had a chance to get down. I did see four or five of our town staff members down there and got a good vibe, it